June 15th, 2021, 6:00 PM. I call this Okuny County Council Meeting to order. As a reminder, the public has two times they can speak in council meeting. The first is public comments and the second is public hearing if there is one scheduled. Other than those two times, the public should remain silent during the council meeting. Anyone making disturbance during the meeting will be asked to leave council chambers for the remainder of the meeting. Mr. Lee?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, and Katie, could you put up the ordinance? It's just, this is an ordinance that backs up what Mr. Elliott, our chairman, is saying. And I think last meeting we did a fine job in holding to that. One other matter that's come up, and for the public who's not here, if you could, in advance of the meeting, if you have something you want to get to council, email it to Katie Smith, our clerk to council. If you can't do that, bring it here and just hand it to me before, so we don't have folks approaching the council members. It's just an odd day and time, odd climate, so I don't think anyone has ill intent in here, but if you could follow that procedure, that would be, that would be best. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, public comment session. You have four minutes per person. I'll hold this up when, my minute's remaining, I'll hold this up when your time's up. Perry Smith.
Hello, guys. I'm Perry Smith. I would like to talk with you today about what I see as dysfunction in the county governance. We have division through our county. One major issue is emergency services, volunteer versus paid staff, et cetera. I would like to see council lead the way in tamping down this division and dysfunction. You guys can dig that. With that being said, in my position as president of the Oakway Voting Precinct in District 4, I would like to extend an invitation to each of you to the Oakway Precinct meeting Thursday, June 17th at 6:00 PM in the cafeteria of the Oakway, Old Oakway High School, which is Fairytown Youth Center, there at 150 Schoolhouse Road in Westminster. And, Mr. Davis, I would like to particularly invite you to attend, since the Oakway Precinct is your home precinct and it's in District 4. And I would make sure that you had time to address the people if you so chose to. Ms. Brock, the discussion about the proposed Oakway Emergency Services Station, which is local fire, which is local fire leaders, which local fire leaders have written a letter to council opposing will be on the agenda for this meeting. And this would give you a good opportunity to explain the need for this. Since the Oakway Rural Fire Volunteer Fire Station was the first in Okuny, back in the late 1950s, this meeting would present you with a good opportunity for you to explain how you see the Fire Station 21's future interaction with rural fire stations throughout the county, or throughout Okuny. I would like to see you guys there, I would really like to see you guys there, and maybe this could be a good opportunity to turn the page and tamp down some of the dysfunction and division within our county governance and its impact on our residents. What we need here is unity. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Mickey Haney.
I'm here today to ask you to take one thing under consideration. During the public hearing on ordinances, we need to be able to have the backup material available for the speaker that's up here presenting to y'all, so that they can take you line item by line item through the things they're discussing, and also so that the audience and the people that view this on YouTube will be able to follow along. I think it'd behoove us all to understand what the speakers up here are trying to get across to y'all, not unless y'all see this as nothing more than trying to create an illusion that the public speaking is something that you'll take under consideration. So that being said, at the last meeting, council meeting, there were some statements that were made that brought some concern to me. One is raising the fees because of the 2008 standards are outdated and are behind. With the revenue returned in the last few years, there's no reason to raise fees. Fees are a form of taxation. And the newspaper got it wrong. They actually stated that I was talking about the solid waste fees. No, if you go back to your booklet, I was talking about the register of deed fees, the road and bridges fees, the planning fees, fees, and the solid waste fees. I did exempt the airport there because the airport really serves very little of the people here in Okuny County, and they waive the majority of their fees. The other thing is the bombastic speech given on transparency by one of the council members. It, it really shows their loyalty where it lies, and it's not the taxpayers. The transparency is like being pregnant. You either are, or you're not. Anything other than being completely transparent is semi-transparent. And there's a, I looked up the definition for that individual, and hopefully he will adhere to it. It is the capacity of outsiders to obtain a valid and timely information about the activities of government. That's in Botanica. The problem is, it was not valid information. The correct response would have been, "You're right. I see the issues, and if we're not continuously improving, we're falling behind." Or, "I will look into this and get back to you and get back to you." Anything other than that is not transparency. The other thing that was stated was, "I do not see a reason why we should make changes in the second or third public speech or public hearing." We should strive to make changes anytime we see that there's ability for us to improve. We should not allow that to hold us back. If you fail to do that, I have to ask, are you allowing your personal relationships to block you from change? Or do you have what I consider the dirty diaper syndrome? And most kids here, or most people that raise kids understand this. When a baby gets to a certain age, he will make a mess on himself, and it smells up the whole area around him. And they pitch a fit when somebody wants to come in and change it. That's the dirty diaper syndrome. And if that's what you got, get over it. You work for us. That's it.
Edna Reed. Did I say the name wrong? Edna Reed?
I was only signing and reading here, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Does anyone else wish to speak in public? Yes, sir.
Hey, everybody. My name's Luke Moore. I'm not coming up to say anything really negative or anything like that. Just want to ask if I could get you guys to consider something. I noticed on all of these that, and I brought it up before, the pledge of allegiance and the prayer is like fourth line item. Could we consider moving those up to right after call to order? I feel like it's an important thing to, he always prays, to ask God's guidance in our, how we handle ourselves and how we handle everything, and usually he works on both sides of the situation. So I would like to request that y'all consider taking this from line item number four or five and putting it up to line item number one. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. And state your name, please.
Pete Bevelackwell. I'd like to apologize for addressing Mr. Hart here. I didn't mean to do that. I didn't know that I had access. And it's nice to know that on a personal basis that we can all talk to you at one time or another, and I know you have a line here, and we don't need to encroach that, so I just wanted to apologize.
Council member comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, you spoke on emergency services. I think it's no secret in the county that there is friction between the volunteer and the paid staff. And I'm on the private safety committee, I kind of get caught in the middle of both ends of that, and both sides have valid points, and I think communication is key to that. And as a council, we need to work towards opening that up and bringing them together. The meeting on the 17th, I would love to be there, but I have to work. Especially when you're being, talking about the fire service in that area, I would love to be there, but because of work, I apologize, I cannot. Mr. Haney brought up a good point about backup material being available when we have public hearings. Ms. Brock, is that something possible we can do?
I'm looking at Mr. Smith, sir. I think we can run a dual screen, it's like when we have an in-presentation to council and there's just our agenda small in the corner. I believe that we can make the backup material larger, make sure to keep the agenda small.
We can't use a thumb drive or anything like that, because we don't want our system to be corrupted. Yeah, just a normal backup. Somebody has a question, we can pull up that document. And, Mr. Moore, about the prayer and the pledge, I appreciate you mentioning that. We discussed it at previous meeting. I'm very thankful that Okuny County does include prayer in their meetings, you know, that's probably not the norm, and I appreciate Okuny County being bold and strong in doing that. I'd also would like to see us do it at the front of the meeting, first thing, so that we all have a chance as a public and as a council and staff to pray for guidance before we even begin the meeting. And, Mr. P, I think you can come and approach us anytime before the meeting and talk, you know. I think we all want to hear from the public. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, moment of silence, please. Mr. Root?
Yes, sir. Pray with me if you'd like to. Well, Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you've made. It's a wonderful day to be alive, and help us to remember that you have given us that life, and to be appreciative for all the small gifts and the large gifts that you give us, the very air that we breathe, the ability to get together and conduct meetings, that freedom that we have here. Help us to appreciate it and not take it for granted. And this evening, pray that you give us wisdom, that you give staff the ability to help council the ability to see beyond their own human vision with your wisdom, that you'd guide and direct this meeting, that it would be your meeting. In your name I pray. Amen.
Mr. Hart, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is our motion approved, the June 1st, 2021, regular minutes?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Ms. Brock?
Mr. Chairman, council, no comments. Thank you so much.
Mr. Root?
I don't have any other questions.
Proclamation 2021-08. Proclamation honoring Lake A. Julian II, Okuny County Director of Facilities Maintenance upon his retirement. Whereas, Mr. Lake Julian, a resident of Salem, South Carolina, is married to Mrs. Gay Julian, and together they have one son, Lake A. Julian III. And whereas, Mr. Julian began working as a full-time Okuny County employee on March 15th, 2004. And whereas, Mr. Julian served as the Director of Okuny County Rock Quarry, Animal Control, and Facilities Maintenance. And whereas, Mr. Julian's experience in construction and project management, purchasing, heavy equipment operation, carpentry, OSHA, and safety regulations made him an invaluable member of the Okuny County team. And whereas, Mr. Julian actively participated in various projects, including but not limited to, the construction and maintenance of South Cove and Shawram Camp Stores, ADA compliant restrooms at all county parks, and the Okuny County Detention Center and maintenance and renovations to all county facilities. And whereas, Mr. Julian is renowned as a hardworking and fair supervisor, at all times committed to helping his staff and peers in providing alternate solutions when facing any task. And whereas, after 17 years of service to the citizens of Okuny County, Mr. Julian retired on June 2nd, 2021. Now, therefore, we the Okuny County Council do hereby recognize and express our sincere gratitude for Mr. Julian's dedication and commitment to the county and congratulate him on the occasion of his retirement. Second. All in favor?
He'll be a celebrity. Come on up.
Everybody.
Come on, Gay. Come on, Pod.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We'll put you on the square.
Mr. Julian? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Proclamation 2021-09. Mr. Kane? Can you please read that, please?
Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Proclamation honoring Joyce Sharick, Okuny County Voter Registration Elections Executive Director upon her retirement. Whereas, Mrs. Joyce Sharick, a resident of Seneca, South Carolina, married Todd, chaired on July 12th, 2014, and has four children and two grandchildren. And whereas, in early 2000, Mrs. Sharick began working as a full-time Okuny County employee as a clerk of the Voter Registration and Elections Office. And whereas, Mrs. Sharick was appointed by the Board of Registration and Elections to serve as County's second Voter Registration Elections Executive Director in June 2001. And whereas, Mrs. Sharick is the longest-serving Director for Okuny County Registration and Elections. And whereas, Mrs. Sharick has served the citizens of Okuny County with her professionalism, knowledge, and dedication to the election process for 20 years. And whereas, Mrs. Sharick is recognized as a dependable coworker and friend, and has always been willing to help coworkers, members of the community, and the board when needed. And whereas, known for her love of family and unparalleled personality, Mrs. Sharick will undoubtedly continue on to great things, enjoying time with her family and making many new memories following her retirement on June 28th, 2021. Now, therefore, we the Okuny County Council do hereby recognize and express our sincere gratitude for Mrs. Sharick's dedication and commitment to Okuny County, and congratulate her on the occasion of her retirement, adopted, and approved this 15th day of June 2021.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Come on up. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good, sir. Good to see you.
Where are you going?
Right here next to you.
Get up together.
We'll get closer.
Okay, I can't see her. Yeah, there you go.
I might need to switch spots.
There you go.
I'll miss anybody.
Okay, ready, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, will you please read Proclamation 2021-10?
Yes. Proclamation 2021-10. Proclamation honoring Karen W. Lee, Okuny County Associate Probate Judge, upon her retirement. Whereas, Miss Karen W. Lee, a resident of Westminster, South Carolina, is married to Daniel Danny Lee, and together they have one son, Micah. Whereas, on January 1st, 1987, Miss Lee began working as a full-time county employee as a Secretary Two at the Okuny County Probate Court. Whereas, Miss Lee later served as a probate court clerk for Judge Ballinger, deputy probate judge for Judge Sandra Burge, or, and associate probate judge for Judge Orr, and Judge Johns. And whereas, in good times and difficult times, Miss Lee has served in a diverse range of people and provided courteous and comprehensive help to county officials, members of the public, and fellow staff. Whereas, Miss Lee has distinguished herself as a hardworking and dedicated public servant, and at all times committed to helping her community with a sense of fairness, and has provided invaluable leadership and guidance on many matters. And whereas, her colleagues know her as a steady, dependable coworker and friend who takes pride in her work and in this community, who is always ready to lend a helping hand when needed. Whereas, after 34 years of service to the citizens of Okuny County, Miss Lee will retire June 30th, 2021. Now, therefore, we, the Okuny County Council, do hereby recognize and express our sincere gratitude for Miss Lee's dedication and commitment to the county, and congratulate her on this occasion for her retirement, approved and adopted the 15th day of June 2021.
Is our motion approved?
Yes, sir.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This guy on Okuny County Council is her mom, just the second one he's standing in.
Thank you.
All right, ready, one, two, three. Mark.
Public hearing for the following ordinance. Ordinance 2021-13. An ordinance, one, approving the assignment of One Tone Telecom Inc.'s interest in that certain network master agreement dated January 18th, 2017, to Upcountry Fiber LLC, Lee Own subsidiary, The Brew Ridge Electric Cooperative, Inc. Two, approving an amended and restated network master agreement between Upcountry Fiber LLC and Okuny County. Three, authorizing the Okuny County Administrator to execute the amended and restated network master agreement. And four, other related matters. No one has signed up for this public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on it? If not, I close. Ordinance 2021-13, public hearing. Third reading of that ordinance is scheduled after executive session. There are no second readings. First reading of the following ordinances. Ordinance 2021-14. An ordinance to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of a portion of local coronavirus fiscal recovery funding that has been allocated to Okuny County under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, known as ARPA, as follows. Appropriating $2 million of county ARPA funding for purposes of necessary water infrastructure improvements for the town of Salem, Salem Water Infrastructure Project. Authorizing the expenditure, subject to certain terms and conditions, is up to $2 million of such appropriated funds for the Salem Water Infrastructure Project and other matters directly related thereto. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2021-15, entitled only. An ordinance to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of a portion of local coronavirus fiscal recovery funding that has been allocated to the Okuny County under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, known as ARPA, as follows. One, appropriating $1,300,000 of county ARPA funding for purposes of necessary water infrastructure improvements for the city of Westminster, the Westminster Water Infrastructure Project. Two, authorizing the expenditure, subject to certain terms and conditions, is up to $1,300,000 of such appropriated funds for the Westminster Water Infrastructure Project. And three, other matters related thereto. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to vote yes on this first reading of this ordinance, and take these comments, and no way to me that I'm against this funding, just that with the previous one, the same one, as we was well aware of it for a while, so it was uneasy, you know, had time to do research. The first I saw this was Thursday, when I got the agenda, and just on my own part and due diligence, before the second reading, I need to spend some time with Mr. Davis, as well as officials from the city of Westminster. That's all.
Would you like to do that beginning of next week?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Noticing this, we just went with $2 million bucks. Now, 1.3 million. Where does the line form? I'd like to get in it for my district, and since there are five districts, and there's 15 million, it looks like each district ought to get about $3 million to fund the necessary things that need to be done in these districts.
I sure hope we get a St. Seward exit four in your district.
Well, thank you.
I'll be looking forward to you bringing that up.
Where's the line?
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brock, have we received any estimates now to extend sewer?
Sorry, we have not. We did have the first RFP meeting this morning for the basin study for one and two. We're actively in the basin study for exit four. Once we get the basin study back for exit four, we should be able to put that out and get some preliminary engineering and some pricing.
What kind of timetable is that?
Mr.? That's not part of this discussion.
Well, if we're talking about the American funding, I just...
But we're talking about Westminster.
We just discussed it. So just real quick, what's the timetable?
I'm hoping to have a preliminary cost estimate by late September.
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Root?
I'm sorry, I may have misdirected you. I was just trying to make another point on the, you noted that it was entitled only, but we were able to get the ordinance fully in there in the backup yesterday. I just wanted to clarify it for the record. Sorry for pointing at you. I didn't want to, sorry.
Do we need to amend, you mentioned to me that might be, need to amend this ordinance? Mentioned that we might need to amend the dollar amount?
No, we do not.
You do not?
We do not. We had a supplemental request that's also in the backup materials from Mr. Bronson from the city of Westminster, so that gets it up to 1.3 million.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And they will be here to present on the second reading.
Good. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
So first and final reading of the following resolution. I'm going to read the resolution. Resolution 2021-07. A resolution recognizing and designating April 2021 Resolution 2021-07, a resolution recognizing and designating April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. Whereas Oconee County desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to obtain a decent, safe, sound living environment, and whereas Oconee County rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and/or family status in the sale, rental, or provision of housing services. And whereas the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1989, whereas April is recognized nationally as the Fair Housing Month, now therefore be resolved that Oconee County does hereby recognize April 2021 as Fair Housing Month and designates it as such. New proof to... Is there a motion to approve?
I like a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Discussion regarding action items. Used 2014 Bell B-30E articulated water truck, water quarry, excuse me, rock quarry, $215,000. Budget $782,000, project cost $215,000, balance $567,000. It is staff's recommendation that council approve the purchase of the used 2014 Bell B-30E articulated water truck on national equipment dealers, whose business is A/RHI of Columbia, South Carolina, in the amount of $215,000. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. As usual, I checked this out, and it falls right in line, but the only thing that I do see that we need on our material is in the backup material. When I was reading this, I had to go to the backup material to find it. Be helpful if you put down the hours that this equipment has been running. It is on the backup material, I found it there, but it's not on the agenda. Anybody just looking at it would not know what kind of hours this machine had.
We can make a note of that, thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Council Committee reports planning and economic development. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On June 1st, 2021, 5:00 PM, Planning Economic Development Committee here in council chambers. The first item on our agenda was a collision and injury report presentation for the period of 2010 through 2020. Mr. Mike Smith, Planning Commission Chairman, addressed the committee and gave a brief presentation. We went over the primary contributing factors for collisions, frequent primary contributing factor, excuse me, factors for non-fatal injury collisions and fatal collisions, as well as broad objectives for improving road safety. Mr. Elliott made a motion, seconded by myself, approved unanimously to request the Planning Commission to develop code change recommendations to implement safety improvements. Next, there's discussion regarding litter cleanup and education programs, including incentivized initiatives and intergovernmental and public-private solutions. Miss Brock addressed the committee, gave a brief overview of the litter cleanup and education program, which included eligible nonprofit organizations to compete in litter pickups annually. Organizations that would be eligible include nonprofit organizations, schools, other civic groups, and they must have been in existence for at least one year, requiring a letter from the Department of Revenue, must be designated 501(c)(3) and submit their latest audit in W-9 form, must have liability insurance, they must sign waivers to participate in pickup program. Applicants would apply for a certain number of miles to clean up, and Oconee County would be responsible for evaluation of the application process. Within a 12-month period, pickup weight would be recorded and kept by the county. There would be a winner that would get a designated amount more than others. I made a motion, seconded by Mr. Elliott, and approved unanimously to direct staff to begin implementation of the program and bring back to full council the presentation. This is based on pilot program that Pickens County is currently working on. Next, we had discussion regarding first and second quarters of economic activity in Oconee County. Ms. Annie Cagiano, President of Oconee Economic Alliance, addressed the committee and gave a brief overview of organizational update. And then Ms. Cagiano provided some recommendations regarding the Bailey Bill, which locks in the assessed value of a property, a qualified property for a certain period of time. And Mr. Elliott made a motion, seconded by myself, approved unanimously to direct staff to coordinate with the county attorney to work out an ordinance for the Bailey Bill and bring that back to full council. The next Planning Economic Development Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, at 4:30 PM. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Voided commission appointments. Building Codes Appeals Board, we have one at-large seat, no questionnaire on file for this seat.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Real quick on that, I just want the public to know, Building Codes, you don't have to be a builder to have that, you know, the way that you, we remove the architectural requirement on that per council. So it's, you know, a citizen, Mr. Root, correct me if I'm wrong, it is an open seat to an Oconee County citizen to go through that. Does not have to be, it has to represent a district in Oconee County, but no specific district. Just wanna make sure that that was cleared out there. Build meets about on demand, four to five times a year.
It's been less than that, but yeah.
Just wanna throw that out there if anybody's looking for something. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you. Council will go into executive session for the following purposes. Discuss employment slash personnel matter, county attorney. Two, discussion regarding economic development matter, project Ruby Slipper. Three, discussion regarding an economic development matter, project Drift. And four, receive legal advice and discuss contractual matter regarding county broadband network. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to go out of Executive?
No motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Third reading of the following ordinance. Order 2021-13 and Ordinance 1 approving the assignment of One Tone Telecom, Inc.'s interest in that certain network master agreement dated January 18, 2017, to Up Country Fiber LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of Blue Ridge Electric Corporation, Inc. 2, approving an amended and restated network master agreement between Up Country Fiber LLC and Coney County. 3, authorizing the Coney County Administrator to execute the amended and restated network master agreement. And 4 other related matters. Is there a motion to approve?
No motion.